Championship is something you should certainly be proud of and something you will remember for a long time to come. We hope we don't wait 115 years for another one. Coaches, thank you. Your dedication to these young men will be remembered for a very long time. I remember my high school coaches and what they did for me and the influence they made in my life. Thank you for your dedication to these these men and for doing basketball team.
Fifteen years that any boys' basketball team has achieved the honor of winning a state championship. And whereas the players and coaches of the 2021 boys' basketball team committed significant time, energy, dedication to achieve this victory. And whereas the Smithfield Town Council desires to recognize the talent, the skill, the commitment of the players and coaches of this championship team. Now therefore be it, and it is hereby resolved that the Town Council of the Town of Smithfield, Virginia commends and congratulates the Smithfield High School Boys Basketball Team on its 2021 Class IV Virginia High School League State Championship adopted this 11th day of March 2021. T. Carter Williams, Mayor of Town of Smithfield. Congratulations, guys.
Thank you, Mayor Williams and Mr. Pack. Next, we will have special remarks from the Olive White County Board of Supervisors. I'm going to introduce all of them. And for the ones that are coming up to speak, when I call your name, if you would please come up. The others, if you would please stand when I recognize you. We have with us tonight Chairman Dick Greis from the Smithfield District. We have Vice Chairman Don Rosie from the Carsville District. We have Rudolph Jefferson from the Hardy District. We have Joel Akry from the Windsor District. And William McCarty from the Newport District. And I believe we also have Mr. Randy Keaton with us, their county administrator. Mr. Keaton? Gentlemen, you can use that podium.
Very good. Gentlemen, what a milestone. A lot of time, a lot of effort, a lot of dedication. And we commend all of you on all the dedication and hard work, and also to the parents and grandparents and aunts and uncles that probably said prayers for you when you were overcoming obstacles. We're grateful for all of you. And tonight, it's an honor for us to be with you tonight. And on behalf of the entire citizen makeup of Olive White County and the Board of Supervisors, our county administrator, we are honored by your achievement. You will forever be a part of history of Smithfield High School and of Olive White County. You have honored yourself, you have honored the school, you have honored the school division, and you have cast a great honor upon all the citizens of this county. We honor you. Congratulations. And those rings, I cannot wait to see those rings. I bet they're going to be off the chain. I can't wait to see them. And so we're glad to be with you. Continue the hard work. Take the lessons that you learned on the court into life. I promise you, they'll be invaluable in the days, months, and years ahead. Mr. Jefferson is going to read the proclamation that the Board of Supervisors presented. And just know, we're honored to just be in front of you tonight. Thank you.
Before I read the resolution, I would like to say, I too, as Mayor Carter Williams said, I graduated from Smithfield High School in 1971. So it does my heart great pleasure to be part of this event. And I wholeheartedly thank you all for inviting us and making us part of history here. I thank these coaches, I thank these students, I thank the parents and the community for all their support for these kids and for these coaches and this community over this year and the years before. But I truly sat in the bleachers at Smithfield High School for several years while my son was playing, and we won many battles, but we didn't win the war. So I can't say these guys here, they won the battle and the war. And with that being said, I would say congratulations, coaches and basketball players. All right, now I'll read this. The Resolution to Recognize and Congratulate the Smithfield High School Basketball Team. Whereas the Smithfield High School Packers Basketball Team won the 2021 Virginia High School League Four, I mean League Class Four State Basketball Championship. And whereas the Packers Basketball Team advanced to the state championship by also winning the Virginia High School League Region A Championship. And whereas the Packers Basketball Team finished the 2020-2021 basketball season undefeated with a record of 11 wins and no losses. And whereas this is the first basketball championship in 100-year history of Smithfield High School. And whereas the Board of Supervisors desires to recognize and congratulate the Smithfield High School Packers Boys Basketball Team for its memento achievement. Now therefore be it, and it is hereby resolved that the Board of Supervisors of the County of Olive White, Virginia recognizes and congratulates Smithfield High School Packers Boys Basketball Team for outstanding achievement in winning the 2020-21 Virginia High School League Class IV State Basketball Championship adopted this 4th day of March 2021. Signed by the Chairman of the Board of Supervisors, Richard L. Greis, and Carrie M. Storm, the Clerk of Olive White County Board. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we will hear from Delegate Emily Brewer, who represents most of Olive White County in the Virginia General Assembly. Delegate Brewer?
Good evening, members of the board. Smithfield High School, Coach Porter. First, I know that we all had a very challenging year, especially Coach Porter with everything that you've experienced. So many of you could have turned in the towel, you could have looked back and said, maybe this just isn't our year. But you persevered. And I will say, I took a sweet personal joy from texting one of the delegates from Winchester as you guys were winning all night. So he also owes me dinner, so thanks, guys. I appreciate it. But seriously, perseverance is one of the most noble skill sets that I'm sure that each of you possess, and that's why we're standing here this evening. More importantly, of all years, 115 years, first time in history for Smithfield, that's astounding. But I promise you this, you will look back on this year, you will look back and in 20 years, you'll say, do you remember 2021? What a crazy year. Think about 2020, even crazier. But you overcame every single obstacle during a worldwide pandemic to do one of the most absolutely impossible things. And you have made your parents proud, made your coaches proud, you made everybody in this room proud, and they're here today for you. Just a small token of what I see in your futures. You have so many opportunities in front of you. You were able to overcome every single thing to end up here this evening. And you all are so inspiring to me. I'm vertically challenged now, so I will never achieve the height you guys can. But I will tell you this, is that you able, being able to overcome, to achieve an undefeated record in the midst of a global pandemic is one of the most astounding things that many people in this room will ever see. So you should not only give yourselves a pat on the back, but everyone in this room, we're so proud of you. So having said that, for each and every last one of you, as a small token of appreciation from the Virginia House of Delegates, we've all prepared each of you individual resolutions for you to take home, for you to frame. And we have also ordered, as a gift for myself to Smithfield High School, to this board, and to commemorate the basketball team, we are ordering a large proclamation that we will have framed as a gift to a later date that we will give to you, Coach Porter. So thank you all so much for making Olive White County and Smithfield High School so incredibly proud. Thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to stand before you. And I know you all will go into this world to do great things. So thank you for everything you've done.
At this time, we actually have one of the basketball players that would like to speak to the board, Troy Giles. Troy will come up. I think he has some remarks he'd
First off, I would like to congratulate Smithfield High School Varsity Boys Basketball Team. We won the VHSL Division IV State Championship and made Smithfield history. We could not have accomplished this without the support of the Olive White County School Board and help of our Athletic Director, Coach Matthew Moore. I know there were a lot of meetings and discussions behind the scenes about COVID-19 outbreaks and if it was even safe for us to play, as well as cost to make it safe for us all. We are grateful for your decision to allow us to complete the season. Not only did you allow us to play, we were treated like college players for the championship game against Hanley. Because of your support, we traveled to Winchester in a charter bus, got our own room at the Marriott, and had great meals. We did not have to ask our parents for money, not one dime. We knew that we had to win after all of that. Our ride home, or our ride home from Winchester would have been You made our trip one that we will remember and cherish for the rest of our lives, and for that, we are thankful. I also would like to take this opportunity to thank our coaches. Head Coach Theodas Porter, Coach Good, Coach Savage, Coach McGee, and Coach White, and Coach Riddick. Coach Porter, you had the vision of us winning a state championship for several years now. You pushed us to put in the work and get better, and you prepared us for several years now. We thank you, and we thank, we thank you for the faith that you had in God and in our abilities. We also would like to thank the coaches' families for sharing their loved ones with us. And of course, thank you, parents, for what you have done for us. Most importantly, I would like to thank God for his blessings and for keeping us healthy during this season. Thank you.
Okay, that was beautiful. This is when you regret not being able to hug people. Coach Porter, I believe Coach Porter and some of, and Coach Riddick are going to come up. They, Coach Porter has something to say, and Coach Riddick has something he's going to hand out to the board members.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
First and foremost, I'd like to thank the board, Dr. Thornton, for allowing us this opportunity. We are very aware that not many people was able to play, especially in the 757 this year. But you guys believed, you came up with the mitigation strategies and everything to keep our student athletes, as well as our coaching staff, safe during this pandemic. And we are greatly appreciated that opportunity. Thank you to the parents as well, because, you know, again, you still have to make that decision. Dealing with the pandemic, you have to weigh the option of allowing your child to be a part of this. And I thank you for having trust in us as a staff to do the right things and keep your child safe and keep you guys safe. We definitely appreciate that, that whole situation with that. I also want to say, I had a quick presentation I wanted to make as well before I sat down. We had another outstanding achievement not many people got to hear about. Rashad Tucker, could you come up here, please? For the 2021-year Smithfield High School Basketball Player Rashad Tucker was named the nominee for the McDonald's All-American Team.
Yeah, unfortunately, one, one of the unfortunate things with the pandemic is they're not doing individual honors like, you know, first team, all-state, second team, all-state, all-region. So none of these students are going to get an opportunity to get those same recognitions that they would have gotten in a year before. But I can tell you guys, you're first team in every single person's heart here and in all of Olive White County. We love you so much and are so proud of you. What we're going to do at this time, we want to do some photo ops in the gymnasium with our team and our special guests that were here to recognize them. So we're going to ask our team members, coaches, and their families if they will exit through the back door, and our special guests are going to follow them out. And it don't, I mean, you know, you really haven't had a lot of fans at games. So as you go out, you know, we're going to pretend we're there in the gym, and we're going to give you the big round of applause as you exit, like you're running on the court. So we want to congratulate you once again. And if you'll head on to the gymnasium, all of our guests and that are here for the basketball team, Mr. Elliott's going to take some photos for Okay. That was exciting. We do actually have one more recognition tonight.
Oh, someone's got to follow that?
I know. But only SSC could follow that. So is this, oh, okay, we have Mr. Hyatt here, I believe, to give our award for the SSC Employee of the Month. Mr. Hyatt, you can come right up to that podium.
That was so nice. Good evening, everyone. That's a tough one to follow right there. But I'd like to start out by saying thank you for allowing us to be here tonight. This month, we would like to award Mr. Johnny Hutz with Gym Employee of the Month. He's earned it. I call him Johnny on the spot for a reason. All right. He started off on the custodial team, came to help Grounds team in a pinch. I was quick to grab him up, and it was probably one of the best decisions I made. Regardless of what department calls for his assistance, whether it be maintenance, custodial grounds, he is there to respond without hesitation with a smile on his face. And for that, we here at SSC are very thankful. Thank you.
And that will conclude our Achievers. Thank you all very much. For those that came out to support the Achievers tonight, we appreciate you being here. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Briggs.
All right, Mr. Briggs.
That was great. That was so good. Okay, next on the agenda is special presentations, and we're going to begin with special education sensory room.
I'm back. We have some special guests with us tonight. I'm going to ask them to come up while I talk about them. And Eric, there's, actually, can we go back to Achievers for a minute? I apologize. If we can get back to the very last slide on Achievers, I believe. There we go. Okay. And can you click the link on Achievers on that slide? I apologize. Will that open up? Okay, well, it's okay if it does. All right. So with us, and ladies, if you'll face the board while I talk, face the board members. So, okay, during, thank you. During the 2019-2020 school year, the division added sensory rooms at four schools: Windsor Elementary, Carrollton Elementary, Westside Elementary, and Smithfield Middle. The rooms are designed to provide students with personalized sensory input that helps students with sensory needs to calm and focus themselves so they can be better prepared for learning and interacting with others. Two members of the Special Education Department were instrumental in the development of the rooms. They are Kalen Long, wave Kalen, there we go, board-certified behavior analyst, and Margie Judah, occupational therapist. We would like to recognize them for their advocacy for students with disabilities, their passion for working with students who demonstrate difficult behavior, and their creativity to put into practice what they knew would benefit students with unique sensory needs. Now, students with disabilities have a space that promotes active movement, coordination, and self-regulation. Kalen and Margie dreamed what could be and then made those dreams a reality. They helped to establish those four sensory rooms, and on top of that, their work is featured on the vendor website, which we'll have a link to that in our Achievers information. But you can see some of the pictures of students using those rooms. I will tell you, these pictures were taken before March 13th, 2020. But you can see the different equipment and how the equipment will be used in the room. So we want to commend Kalen and Margie for their vision and their initiative to make these happen, these rooms happen, to the benefit of our students. And I'm going to get a quick picture of you ladies, if you don't mind. And that concludes the sensory room presentation.
I have a question about the sensory room. Can we dream one at Carsville Elementary School?
There's a yes in the back from Ms. Magner.
Do we not, we, so we can't have one?
We're trying to figure out space.
Okay. Yeah, let's dream big, because they, they need it. Thank you. Okay, next we have the Equity Proclamation. Ms. Jones.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair, board members, Mr. Lombardo, somewhere behind his pole. Olive White County Schools' Proclamation, Equity in Education Month. Whereas the Virginia School Boards Association has identified March as Equity in Education Month, and whereas the COVID-19 pandemic has revealed inequities in schools and increasingly significant challenge and responsibility we have in addressing them, and whereas the majority of school-age students in the United States of America are children of color in Virginia, and in Virginia, 50% of public school students qualify for subsidized meals. And whereas we recognize that factors, including but not limited to disability, race, ethnicity, language preferences, and socioeconomic status, have a demonstrated history of impacting the educational opportunities provided to a student. And whereas we recognize the importance of creating an equitable learning environment and closing the opportunity gap for all students. And whereas it is important for Virginia families, students, teachers, and school administrators to be aware of the diverse needs of learners and to encourage discussions of the challenges as a school community. And whereas Olive White County Schools is establishing a Division Diversity Committee, Community Diversity Committee, and Student Diversity Committee to stay at the forefront of discussions and actions to make student opportunities more equitable in our schools. And whereas we recognize that inequities in resources, including educational settings and buildings, supplies, and technology, impede student learning. And it is our responsibility to directly address these inequities. Now, therefore, the School Board of Olive White County Schools does hereby recognize March 2021 as Virginia School Boards Association Equity in Education Month in our schools, and call this observance to the attention of all of our citizens and residents. Be it further resolved that a copy of this spread in the minutes of the Olive White County School Board meeting of March 11th, 2021. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a question. Today, I was reading this again and just really reflecting on it. And one of the things, you know, as we're talking about what we recognize, one of the things that is near and dear to my heart, because I see it, I saw it in the classroom, we've definitely seen it during the pandemic, is the fact, the research-based fact, that parental involvement directly impacts student learning. And I think that you may can help me see where that might be in this, or do we need to add it to say that we recognize that inequities in parental involvement or family engagement impedes student learning, and it is important to address those inequities?
That is a great question. Inside of the declaration, inside of the proclamation, it's noted as community, and it says community several times, because not all students have parents. Some of them are raised by grandparents. But then there's an African proverb that says, it takes a village to raise a child. So that village means that there needs to be a community. So we use it, we use the word community meaning parents, family, friends, the next-door neighbor who gets you up for school in the morning, or the school board member who remembers to thank them on social media. So it's encompassed in community.
So it is, in your opinion, that that is included in this proclamation?
Absolutely. And a lot of it is education, too. We have to educate our community to explain to them what that means and how this is all of us or none of us, and what their part in being a community is.
Okay, thank you.
You're very welcome.
Ms. Carr?
Okay, this is an action item, so we will need a motion.
Madam Chair, I would like to make a motion that we approve the Equity Proclamation as presented.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, and it has been second. Vote, please. Okay, motion carried. Okay, at this time, we have a presentation by Ms. Leah Carroll. It's on Equitable Electoral Proposal.
Madam Chair, before Leah begins her presentation, I just wanted to share that her presentation on equitable elective grade weighting is a topic that she's very passionate about, and as you'll see, has done a tremendous amount of research on. As a school board student liaison from Windsor, she asked if she could be able to share her presentation with the board, and I know she's very excited to do that. Please note that this topic is not currently a priority for the division, and it does fall under Regulation IAe-R. So this is not action for the board, and as I said, it falls under the administration decision part as a regulation. And although there is no action planned at this time, I think, as you'll see, her presentation will certainly lead to additional conversation and research on this topic in the future.
Good evening, everyone. Can everyone hear me? Okay. Thank you so much for letting me present on this topic tonight. It's about a problem I've been witnessing a lot, especially during COVID-19. And first, I'd like to start by sharing our current GPA weightings. So far, all honors classes receive a GPA weighting of 4.5, and they also receive the designation of H on a high school transcript, showing colleges how designation of H on a high school transcript, showing colleges how much more difficult they are, while all regular classes receive a GPA weighting of just 4.0 with no designation. Well, right now, all of our electives and our double-block CTE courses and our foreign languages are weighted as the same 4.0, meaning that Art 1 and Art 4 are weighted the exact same and given the same designation on a transcript. This creates a problem when students are choosing their classes. Society and teachers and counselors and families are often pressuring students to build a rigorous schedule for college, for transcripts, for employment, but this makes students afraid to take classes that will weigh their GPA down, even if they love a certain elective or an art or a trade. They often stop taking these classes once they get to their junior or senior year because they're afraid that another 4.0 will weigh them down even more than early release or an AP or DE or honors course. Also, students who excel in the arts or the trades and may not take an honors academic course as they're offered right now don't receive the credit that they deserve for their own special, unique gifts and talents. So my proposed solution is that we give all fine arts or electives courses at the third year level and above the honors title and 4.5 GPA weighting, and give the same to all double-block CTE courses at the second year level and above, and foreign languages at the fourth year level and above. And I've chosen these specific years because they go beyond the requirement for an advanced studies or standard diploma. Currently, you only need two sequential electives, one CTE course, or three foreign languages for a advanced studies diploma. Now, I'll get into some more detail of the benefits of this solution. Number one, the dilemma I was speaking on earlier is gone. Students won't have to sacrifice the classes that they love because they will no longer weigh them down, and they'll be given the same value. But here's what students have to say about that. So I know that's hard to see, but this student says, "The added GPA was often the only reason I took advanced academic classes rather than electives. Speech was the first class that caused me to step out of my comfort zone." And this teacher says, I believe this is our yearbook teacher at Windsor High School, she's had students who have wanted to continue into higher levels of photojournalism, but they've chosen to take AP or dual enrollment classes instead because of the credit or the higher GPA, where if we give them this new honors weighting, students will finally have a choice to take the classes they want. This other teacher says, this is our foreign language teacher, "Students are less likely to take on another difficult elective such as Spanish 4 or 5 if they're already pressured to take more difficult, rigorous courses." Well, because Spanish 4 and 5 can allow students to test out and not take these courses in college, many students are not finding enough incentive at their high school to take these courses to receive those benefits. And finally, this is from our agriculture teacher, "CTE courses have been looked at as an alternate path to higher education for a long time now, and many CTE courses actually lay the groundwork for students to continue their education and find their passion. For instance, someone who's interested in studying architecture should be taking our building trades class. Somebody who wants to be a veterinarian should be taking our agriculture class and be working at the farm. However, right now, if they want to study these fields in college and look competitive, they're hurt for taking our CTE classes, where this policy, this weighting, will help them be more competitive for college or employers. It also encourages the arts and trades. It will get, show the community, show students that we value the arts and the trades just as much as we value academic courses. Electives help people build critical thinking skills. They help people collaborate. They are just as important to a student's education as their academic courses, and it's time for us to show the world that we value them just as much." And finally, this proposal benefits every student. So I'll show you how this benefits certain students of a certain background. As I was saying, someone who's going to college for an academic field, I'm sorry, you can't see it as well, but as I've said, they will be incentivized to take these classes, and they will look more competitive for their skills. For instance, I want to be a lawyer, I want to study poli sci in college, but I've taken every single year of theater in high school. How does theater relate to poli sci or being an attorney? I have gained leadership from being a student director. It helps me public, it helps me have great public speaking skills, it helps me engage with an audience. I definitely think it's helped me be a good student liaison, and it's definitely helping me speak to you right now. How would this help someone who's going to college specifically for an art or trade, so specifically for music or theater? Well, while these students may not specifically excel in honors courses or advanced placement courses, they do excel in their own art or trade, and this can help them be competitive for colleges, for scholarships, and help them pursue college for their specific field. And finally, how does this help someone who's not going to college right after high school but who is entering the workforce? Well, as I said, classes are given a designation on a transcript, so this can show employers how dedicated they are, how skilled they are in a certain trade, in a certain CTE course, and they'll be encouraged to find a passion in high school, so they have a plan right after high school, if that plan isn't necessarily college. So there's a unique benefit for everyone. I'd also like to point out that this is not about readjusting our current classes to make them more rigorous. Our classes are already rigorous, and we've spent so much time on developing our CTE program and our project-based learning program in this county. Electives have been doing project-based learning since the beginning of time, that's the point of electives, and so these students deserve to be credited for their hard work. Here's what students have to say. Once you reach the third year or higher in an elective, you should definitely receive more weight than a regular course because the content difficulty increases. Another student says, "The veteran students in elective classes are more likely to take on leadership roles and mentor the other students, and they should receive credit for their work." Our teacher says, this is our art teacher at Windsor High School, "My higher courses are geared to be more independent and rigorous. Students in Art III and higher are expected to be much more self-motivated and come up with their own ideas." And our yearbook teacher at Windsor High School says, "Photojournalism III and IV students are usually my editors. Higher-level courses require students to supervise their peers, give evaluative feedback, manage staff and content, and establish goals and strategies to achieve them. Electives provide students who are in higher years, photojournalism III and IV, other classes like theater III and IV, to be the leaders in their classes, because our electives are structured so differently from other classes, where you can have Art I through IV students in the same classroom at the same time. That's a leadership experience that not even advanced placement or dual enrollment students currently receive since they're in a classroom with peers who are at their same level." Finally, I would like to mention that there are local schools right now surrounding us with similar weighting policies. While many larger districts have the opportunity to offer AP and IB electives that we currently don't offer as much, they also have given the honors weight, as I presented tonight, to certain classes. Newport News, for example, gives honors, gives the honors course status to every second-level CTE course. Chesapeake gives the honors level status to Art IV. I'm asking that we just catch up with these other schools, and while we may not be able to offer the nationally-recognized programs such as AP and IB, we can offer our students at least the competitiveness on a transcript, competitiveness in a GPA, and just a token of appreciation for their hard work. I'd also like to mention that both of these schools give this status while already offering AP and IB courses. I unfortunately cannot stay for the rest of the meeting, but before I go, does anyone have any questions?
I don't have a question, but I would like to commend you on your hard work and for doing this, because this is, I've pretty much been out there on a limb by myself with another issue that we had come before the board earlier with GPA and students that were in the governor's program, and this is what they were saying, if they could have the same, you know, leverage as the students that are taking the academic classes here. And so you've pretty much fixed that, and I thank you.
Thank you.
Because I, I truly believe what we did yesterday was fine at that time, but we need to move forward into the future and catch up. And this is what you have done, and this is what we need to consider doing as a board and as well as our administrators.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Did you have something to say?
Madam Chair, Leah, I'd like to thank you for your hard work.
Thank you.
Because this took a great deal of effort on your part, and I think you've raised some points that all of us need to be looking at very seriously for the benefit of, of our future students.
Thank you.
Great job, Leah, and you did give a lot of food for thought tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Thank you for letting me present, and everyone have a great night.
Next on the agenda is Request to Speak.
Okay, the first one is Mr. Herb DeGraw.
Madam Chair and Board Members, good to see you this evening. Really a lot to celebrate this evening. But hey, Board Members, you understand that the superintendent can only recommend a budget to you? You have to approve it. How can you approve a coordinator for capital projects at a cost of $100,000 in salary and benefits when you already have an architect and construction manager at risk who collectively will be paid over $1.8 million, the latter position thanks to our Board of Supervisors? This is a duplication of duties and unnecessary expense and waste of taxpayer dollars. You could more wisely provide funds for a STEM teacher at Hardy Elementary that so sorely they needed instead of this wasteful proposition. Hardy's students need this most of all. I'm surprised that two of you, Denise and Alvin, sit idly by and don't demand this for our school with the greatest percentage of minority students. Dr. Thornton was even quoted in the Smithfield Times of 5 March 2019 when he said, quote, "A STEM class at Hardy would create a more equitable and accessible school system. Hardy has the highest rate of students from families living in poverty," end quote. How can you, Board Members, explain this glaring discriminatory treatment to Hardy staff and parents and not have already directed that Hardy's students have a STEM teacher so Hardy's students can have the same experiences Dr. Thornton refers to that other largely white-populated elementary schools in IWCs have? Vicki stood up for Carrollton Elementary, and they got two STEM teachers, right? Board Members, especially you, Denise and Alvin, you need to do your job for once and call Dr. Thornton right now, and you know he's watching this meeting, and say, "We're not voting for the coordinator for capital project position and amend the 2022 budget proposal to remove it." Besides, didn't Dr. Thornton bring an administrator here from his old haunts that was touted as having school construction experience that would likely be beneficial in the future? So move to amend, too, by adding the position of a STEM teacher at Hardy for these students who've been underserved too long. It is totally more important than buying $200,000 more furniture, too, don't you think? And yes, Hardy's students literally have been discriminated against by this administration with support by you Board through your silence and failure to act. Only after these amendments are approved by all of you should you vote on the 2022 budget as amended. Remember, our students learn from teachers, not from a capital project coordinator, someone that will never help them learn like a STEM teacher in a Hardy classroom would. If one of your children or grandchildren weren't Hardy, would you have let this happen to them? As Board Members, you have a duty to represent all students, including Hardy's. Dr. Thornton found the money for STEM teachers at Carrollton and Westside, which was the second temp teacher, as I noted, for Carrollton. Hardy still doesn't have one. How equitable is that, Board? Bet you you can find funds to put SROs at Carrollton, Windsor, Hardy, and Carsville Elementary, too. Lastly, with an over 4% reduction in the number of students of 240 less than in 2020 and 2021, with 5,388 students forecast for 2022, you've already gotten at least $2 million plus over the last two years from us, Isle of Wight taxpayers through the Board of Supervisors that you should not have even asked for then. Amend your 2022 budget to the realistic figure of $24,900,000 from us, Isle of Wight taxpayers instead of the exorbitant $26,900,000 that your superintendent proposes to you. And as reported in the Smithfield Times and the Windsor Weekly, you're going to get more federal funds in 2022 than the already-known $2,100,000 through the COVID-relief bill that was just passed, thanks to those folks in Congress. So revel, eh, Board Members? It's obvious you have not done your homework on this budget nor met your fiscal responsibility, a primary job requirement that I remember from my 13 years as a school board member. Do you remember yours?
Thank you, Mr. DeGraw.
So I'm sorry, I can't read the last name. Is it Richardson? So, they may have, I don't know, they may have left. Ms. Carr?
Uh huh.
Mr. Uzil would like to speak. He hasn't signed up, but you know, he's, I'm just saying, he's requesting. The other person doesn't seem to be here.
Okay.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I go to Hardy District. I don't, I don't have much to say this evening, but I would like to speak to Ms. Carr and Ms. uh, Ms. Times for a little short, brief meet, after the meeting. And so we can discuss a few, let's, put a little trigger on something we need to discuss. Also, Mr. DeGraw brought up something that I wasn't gonna say nothing about, but since he brought it up, and I kind of looked at it and thought about it, and then I went to Central office, I picked a brochure up, and I went through it and looked at it, looking at the Board Members. We got some elections coming up this year. I think it's in November, Mr. Wilson, Ms. Carr, and Ms. Perkins. The reelection elections for school board, I think y'all terms coming up here in November? Something like that. What I wasn't gonna say anything about, but it kind of tricked my brain that maybe just start putting that out at Citizens council, we can know who's gonna, before they even want to run for position. But instead of waiting till the last minute, we made this virus stuff going on, we don't know how they're gonna even get out to campaign. But that's, that's the thing, y'all probably forgot, but like I said, I wouldn't even thought about until I went to the brochure and heard about this election coming up. But nevertheless, we in some difficult times, and we have to try to educate our young people. And we all gonna try to do our best, you know, help all, and, and that's what we all need to start doing. We are doing it, but something you can do better, something you gotta leave alone. I understand that. For Ms. Carr and Ms. Times, I'd like to speak, you know, a short, brief after the meeting, then we can go from there.
Thank you, Ms. Uzil. Okay, next, Board Member Committee Reports and Information. Anybody have any reports?
Madam Chair, I attended, attended the virtual meeting of CAC, CAC last week, and what was discussed, Mrs. Briggs came in, and she did a report as far as school board. And then we also did the annual budget for that, and which is included in our agenda tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Times. No one else had any meetings? Okay, we'll go right into the financial presentation.
Evening, Madam Chair, members of the board.
Good evening.
Mr. Lombardo. I just wanted to start, you may have noticed in your financials that we did have what we call a large-ticket item to the tune of $47,000. We bought many iPads for the coding classes. I was informed or reminded by Mr. Cooper, it's listed as, I believe, Westside, but those were for all elementary schools. So that was a typo on my part. In your financials, you should note that the percentage of budget that's been spent so far is 63.3% as of the end of February. Last year at this time, it was 68%, so again, we're under the percentage of spending. And then lastly, it was And then lastly, it was, again, another insightful question. You might have noticed on your food service balance, it's a negative. We, what we try to do with the food service is when we close all of our accounts, we typically close them for the immediately prior month. So at the beginning of March, we closed out ending February. But the food service is always a month prior. We closed out January because the funds we get from the state and the funds we get from the federal government trickle in typically in the subsequent month. So when we closed out January, it turned out that not all the January federal funds had come in. And that showed that it looked as though we spent more than we received. When in fact, actually, the first week of March, almost exactly when the question was asked, we did receive $333,000 of federal funding after we counted our January lunches that were sold. So when we put that into with the negative, we're actually, in the black, $183,000 to the good. So I was pleased to see that, and again, a good question. So I appreciate when you're looking at your financials, by all means, ask whatever questions you can ask. And then there's the check register that kind of speaks for itself. So are there any questions on any of your financial documents?
Well, you did answer my food service question in your presentation. And the only other thing was the, the Synovia Solutions. And when I looked that up, because I felt like I had heard about it, but it's the GPS, and that's for our buses, the transportation. Can, can we just get an update on where we are on that, or is it too early?
I don't know the best one to call on. I can, I'd like to get back to you if I may.
Okay, that's fine.
Unless someone in the audience can assist with that, but... So we want an update on the GPS for the bus.
Right. Okay, he'll do it when he comes up for his presentation. Great. Thank you so much with that.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda is... The addendum to food service contract for 2021. I was wondering where you were going. I'm like, okay, what is next on the agenda?
So, as a reminder, for the 1819 school year, we did a request for proposal, an RFP for food service. Chartwells won that RFP. And the Department of Agriculture says you have to do a formal RFP, but then for several years thereafter, you can simply approve an addendum, which is a three-page document to renew the contract. And that's what's presented to you tonight for action. Assuming you were to approve that, then obviously we'll still have Chartwells beginning July again. And I just, I have to give a shout out to Chartwells because on our behalf, on the behalf of our children, there's some amazing statistics. Since the pandemic, since the pandemic, Chartwells has, has provided to our students over a million meals. Over a million meals since the pandemic. So it's been up just about a year, and that was outstanding. And that goes to Angie Smith and Kevin Kreiner, our local Iowa White employee who assists as the liaison. So I just want to say, those two make an outstanding team. They're doing right by our students, they're doing right by the community. I don't know if you're aware of this, but the federal government has approved that no families since the pandemic began have had to pay for a lunch. So again, we count our lunches, and instead of receiving revenue from our families, we're submitting to the state, who then submits to the federal government, and we get reimbursed for all of those meals, breakfasts and lunches, through the government funding. So again, over a million meals, so that was outstanding. And if there's any questions on the addendum towards Chartwells, I can, I can entertain any questions.
No questions? So this is an action item.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve the food service addendum as attached and presented.
Second. We have a motion, and it has been seconded. Vote please. Okay, motion carried. Okay, third-party administrator for insurance, and this is you again.
Yes. And again, this is another action item. This will be our, our third month briefly discussing as needed, but tonight it's for a recommendation to, for you to vote, to approve Anthem. As our, as our partner in insurance, our third-party administrator, we're self-insured, but we still need that third-party administrator. Again, we use their network of doctors, we contract with them to use their network of doctors. We believe Anthem being as large as they are, they have a lot more buying power with their doctors, and those doctor rates are less than with another insurance company. And secondly, because of their size, I would admit, all the doctors want to participate, so we'll have a great, a large network of doctors that's a benefit to our employees. We've received from our current BPA, Aetna, Anthem, Optima Health, and United Health, and we think we would be in the best position to go by recommending Anthem. So if there's any questions, I can entertain those questions now.
The video that you did was excellent. It was very informative, and we thank you for taking that extra time. I feel like that that should have been very beneficial to our employees.
I hope so, and that was important, yes. Thank you.
This is an action item. If there are no questions?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve the Anthem Blue Cross Blue Shield Insurance Company for the 2021-2022 school year as the Division's third-party administrator for the purpose of managing our health plan.
Second. Can we have a motion, and it has been seconded? Vote please.
Mr. Wilson, would you like to give me a verbal?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Motion carried. Thank you, Mr. Kepnis.
Thank you.
Okay, next is the Early Retirement Initiative Plan, and Ms. Elliott is going to help us with that one.
Good evening, Chairman, and members of the Board, and Mr. Lombardo. Last month, in the budget presentation, Dr. Thornton and Mr. Kepnis gave a overview of our Early Retirement Incentive Plan and the benefits that we have to it. And so I'm coming tonight to ask you to, to vote or consider us allowing to offer the EREP, Early Retirement Incentive Plan for the 2021-22 school year. Right now, we have four retirees that have expressed an interest.
Okay. There are lots of benefits with that program.
Yes, ma'am.
Any questions? If not, this is an action item.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to offer the Early Retirement Incentive Plan this year.
Second. Okay, motion has been made and seconded. Okay, motion carried. Thank you, Ms. Elliott. The Transportation Update with Mr. Livingston.
Okay, I'll come over to this side. This thing never wants to cooperate with me. Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
I'm here, I'll answer your GPS question in a moment. All right, I'm back in business. All right. You have a short, little snippet there, kind of kept it kind of short and sweet. It's kind of a hard act to follow tonight with our basketball team, but our wheels are still turning, and we still continue to plan for more and more programs as they start coming alive. So we're keeping, keeping things moving right along over there. So do you have any other questions before I go move on to GPS? All right, I'm gonna, I'll give you a little bit of a teaser of what we're going to do for GPS. I think we'll probably do maybe a little bit more of a presentation, if not next month, maybe in May. Some things that I've been working on as far as replacing the GPS, and not just GPS, but other technology that we're going to be using on our buses, and some innovative ways to pay for that without coming out of the budget. So that's in the future, so... Do you have any other questions about it or anything like that?
We'll look forward to that presentation. I am interested in that.
It's, it's, it's pretty exciting. I think we're going to have also a special guest visit us in a couple of weeks. We're going to have an electric bus, probably spend a couple of nights here. And as we get more of that information solidified, I may put, put out an invitation through Tracy for y'all to come over and take a look at it if you'd like to. So I think that's pretty exciting. I don't think it's something that's maybe right for us today, but within the next couple of years, I think it's definitely something we need to be looking at, so... But it's, it's going to be here, hopefully, tentatively it's going to be here, so...
Okay, thank you.
I have a question.
Yes.
Madam Chair.
Sure.
Mr. Livingston, I was reading some information today, I don't know if it was one day this week, with the Virginia School Board Association. And it was, I think it's one of the local school systems, maybe, it could be new for news, I'm not positive, so... Don't quote me. They're putting cameras on the stop arms. And these video, well, the video cameras is actually going to, are video individuals that's actually running the school bus stops. Do you see us going in that direction in the future? Because just out and about sometime, especially out here on Church and Battery Park Road and in the communities, a lot of people do run those stop signs, stop, the stop arms.
You spoiled my surprise.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's all going to be part of that GPS presentation.
Okay.
And it is, it is something we're looking at. Just today, in fact, this afternoon, within about a 10-minute period, Smithfield Police got three cars for running our red lights right in front of the daycare there on Church Street.
That's impressive.
So, yes, that's, that's going to be all part of that presentation with the GPS, and everything's going to tie together and so forth, so... But yeah, I'm excited about that. I'm not sure this is going to be something we can say is going to be here for next school year, but maybe sometime during the year or sometime for the following year. So it's, it's exciting.
And I, and I also want to add to that, it's not something that we're just doing just so the county or local police departments or whatever can get a little more revenue in their pot. This is something for the safety of the students because I have observed personally where the bus have stopped right there at the daycare center where you mentioned, and people just go right through it. And it, I just want to do it to keep the children safe, the students safe, okay? Now, as far as the people getting their citation, the county will benefit as well. Thank you.
No, I saw that today, when I was on my way here, I saw that.
You see this every night?
They just kept flying right by the stop.
460 is another bad spot.
It was dangerous.
Yeah.
Little kids getting off that bus.
Absolutely. Okay, thank you. And Mr. Coleman is on his way for the Support Services and Operations full report.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the school board, Mr. Lombardo. I'm going to go several different points I'm going to hit tonight, but we're going to start off with the Support Services and Operations. First of all, every month I will be coming to you with the new Hardy update status, the status update. And this month, we actually have, don't have a lot of stuff to actually talk about. Next month will be the big month, where we actually going to go through several things. Thus far, this month, we're sharing the preliminary documents with the construction team, determining a work schedule, and dates will be available to share with the school board at the next school board meeting. I'll have various things to share from the actual contractor, and also the different things from the lawyer also. So just be prepared next month for a much in, more in-depth, actual new Hardy status update. But this will be done every month. Are there any questions concerning the update for the new Hardy at this time?
It's just a beautiful school. I'm excited.
Yes. Next will be the Invitation for Bid, the Windsor High School Re-roofing Project. This has been something that's been ongoing. Tonight, we're seeking approval to move forward with Roof Systems of Virginia. Now, the time of completion is 127 days. July 15th will be the cleanup. This comes along with a 20-year warranty. And Segura Solar has been notified and have assisted in the planning process. Both companies are actually working in tangent to make sure that this actually is a successful project. Well, that's the end of the actual PowerPoints. What you're going to find in your packet is the actual, yeah, 15.3 is actual, I, um, action item. And this action item is the actual approval that I can move forward with the bidding, with the actual roofing projects. Just want to let you know the interviews were conducted with all the contractors in order to ascertain the thoroughness and completeness of each contractor's bid. Having found no errors in the bids, and based on the evaluation criteria set forth in the Invitation to Bid, I recommend that all roofing work at Windsor High School be awarded to Roof Systems of Virginia with an amount of $342,700.
This is an action item?
Yes.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to move forward with the roof replacement at Windsor High School.
Second. Okay, we have a motion, and it has been seconded. Vote please. Okay, motion carried for the Windsor High School roof replacement.
All right. Next, we have 15.4, the Hardy Elementary School update. Now, this update is a little different than the actual plans and the construction documents. This is an acceptance of the Iowa White, it's acceptance by our school board from the school, from the Board of Supervisors, Ala County, Ala County, Ala White County Board of Supervisors approval transfer of the 7.9 acres located on Old Stage Highway and Blunt's Corner Road in the Hardy magistrate district. This is for the construction of the new Hardy Elementary School. So at this time, I would like for the school board to actually accept, accept the, the actual land from the Board of Supervisors. This is also an action item.
Yes.
Are there any questions concerning this before actually move in?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve the administration in working with the Board of Supervisors on acquiring the land for the new Hardy Elementary School.
Second. Okay, we have a motion, it has been seconded.
All right. If there are no other questions for actual Support Services, at this time with 15, we'll be moving to the actual grant.
Mr. Will, I'm sorry, Mr. Wilson. Can you, can you hit the button again, Mr. Wilson?
Thank you. Okay, motion carried.
All right. At this time, are there any more questions concerning Support Services before we actually move into the grant?
No, sir.
All right, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Security Equipment Grant Award.
Yes, ma'am. So I am here to ask that the Board accept the award of $151,000 and change that we won from the VDOE Security Equipment Grant. We did submit for many items that we got, many items we didn't get, but I did want to bring one item because it's the one I keep getting asked about. We did win a grant for Windsor High School and Smithville High School interior classroom doors, which is kind of what this is gonna look like. So it is different at Windsor High School, but I did want to bring this because this is also being proposed for the New Hardy. You'll see that it is a classroom door replacement. We do use the existing cores that were just put in by maintenance and, can't remember the lot company, but they were here a lot last summer. So the keys will still work, but these are badge access, so it gives a lot more flexibility to every classroom. It also will tie directly into the threat control system. So should a building go into threat mode, the doors will get a different access rule applied to them. Are there any questions about what these might be?
So who will have the badge? The all the students and the teacher?
Right, right now, it's still teachers, administrators. But the idea is instead of giving a key to a teacher or a substitute, you can give them a badge. If you lose a badge, it's a whole lot cheaper than having to re-core everything. Right? And then you can allow the teachers, depending on the rules that we put on the doors themselves, you can say, hey, a teacher can, you know, get in between these hours and can unlock the door if they do this, or it'll automatically re-lock at this time if they do this. Plus, it'll give the custodians the access they need to be able to get in clean at night without needing any physical keys.
So these will be the entry?
Uh, this is for classroom doors at Smithville High School and Windsor High School.
Okay.
The Windsor High School one does look different because Windsor High Doors have what's referred to as a mortis. It looks like a deadbolt on them. So it does look a little different, but for Smithville High, it's this. And for Hardy, it depends on what the door package is, so I can't answer that question.
So students won't have badge entry?
Not yet.
Okay. Is that something that eventually it may would happen? You don't know?
We were in the middle of rolling out student badges last March. That all paused and has since been on permanent hold until such time as we feel the need to start moving forward again. Because badges are not cheap, right? But we had built it so that it would be the student ID as well as an access badge. If you recall, we were gonna do like a pilot with those students out in the CTE buildings. And we printed like, we trained a teacher here how to do it, and we printed maybe five badges, and then it was, everybody go home. So we went.
Well, it's good we only did five, right? We only did five?
We did five.
Okay. We didn't waste a lot of money then?
No, but badges are not cheap when you buy them. I mean, they're not ridiculous, but they're not free.
Okay.
So I just wanted to show off a little bit of fun stuff.
You showed off very well.
I tried. So I'm just asking that we accept the award.
Hey, it's good to be able to have part of our agenda accepting a grant award.
That's right. That's what I like doing.
That's right. All right, this is an action item.
Madam Chair. No, please, go ahead. Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve the acceptance of the Security Equipment Grant in the amount of $151,389.
Second.
Okay, the motion has been made and second. Okay, motion carried. Thank you, Mr. Cooper. Next on the agenda is from the addendum, the Furniture Purchase.
Madam Chair, once again, just want to go through the actual furniture purchase and let you know exactly what you have in front of you. What you have in front of you is actually the furniture purchase for Windsor Elementary School and Carsville Elementary School. We have exactly 650 chairs, that's for Windsor Elementary School. And, and I apologize. We have desks and chairs for Windsor Elementary School and the desks and chairs for actual Carsville Elementary School. What Windsor Elementary School and Carsville Elementary School have in it right now is pretty much a hodgepodge of the desks that were left over from the other school systems, from the other schools. So we have desks from West Side and desks from Hardy Elementary that weren't being used at this time. So that's what's actually in the school. So what we want to do is actually make sure that they're equipped so they're ready to actually come back to school when it's time to come back to school. So what you have as an action item is that in your packet.
Is this from the CARES funds?
Yes, ma'am. It is.
Okay. Madam Chair, I would like to make a motion that the furniture purchase for Windsor Elementary and Carsville Elementary School be purchased as presented.
Second. Okay, we have the motion and it has been second.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cooper. I mean, Mr. Coleman. Okay, motion carried. Moving right along to the report from the superintendent. And the first item is the Adult Education Update.
So Madam Chair, unfortunately, due to unforeseen circumstances, Ms. Tawana Ford is not able to be here this evening to present on the Adult Education Program. So what we'd like to do is move her presentation to the April School Board meeting. At that time, she'll share with the Board and community the wonderful work going on in our Adult Education Program and also with our Adult Welding Program. And so I know she's very excited to share that information at next month's meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we're gonna move right on to the 21, 2021, 2022 Special Education Annual Plan First Read. Oh, hey, you're already here.
I'm here already. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Board, and Mr. Lombardo. We have the 2021, 2022 Special Ed Annual Plan for review tonight. It is an in draft form and will be out in the public for the next two weeks after today's meeting and then come back to you guys for approval next month before it goes up to the state. Do you have any questions for me tonight?
The one thing I just wanted you to kind of present is what may be new to this year's budget versus last year? I know a lot of the same things occur from year to year. What is the major difference in this?
In this grant, not much is different because we use this grant pretty much the same way each year. And it pays for the major, it pays for three central office administrator salaries, seven teacher salaries, about four instructional assistants and other staff in our department. After those salaries and benefits are paid for, the remaining do, funds do go to materials and supplies. Our local budget, however, we do a little bit more with that in terms of the curriculum, the materials, the opportunity for sensory rooms. And so that, once we are able to make sure we have the curriculum that we need and the students and regional placements that we need and paid for, then we, when we have money left over, we do things like the sensory rooms you were asking about earlier.
Right, okay.
So in this grant itself, the only thing that's slightly different, and it's really not from last year, we started it last year, but we, we are gonna continue it this year in both the 611 and 619, so school aged and preschool. We did put into the grant for an IEP writer for the summertime. Sometimes we get stuck over the summer months with no one to write IEPs for us, and so we have a stipend in there for those two things.
Okay, all right, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay, next is the Family Life Education.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm here tonight to share our notification practices for Family Life Education. So the bulk of our communication is to our families. Schools send two different letters to affected families. The division letter is by level, so elementary, middle, and high. It includes the required notification for parent rights to preview materials as well as the right to opt out of all or part of the instruction. They also, these division letters also include family life, sorry, family life contacts by school. Schools also then send an additional letter. This more specific letter has the specific dates of instruction for each grade level for that specific school, copies of the standards as well as copies of the instructional PowerPoint that's being used.
Wait, wait, so parents get a copy of the PowerPoint?
Yes, ma'am.
Each individual parent?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
These letters, they also detail the procedures for opting out and for contact information for if you have questions about the girls portion of the gender specific, here's who you talk to. If you have questions about the boys portion, here's who you talk to. So that's all very school-specific, so those come out in the school letters.
And this is for kindergarten up?
So our gender specific, the sensitive topics get covered in third through 10th grade. So that's when those letters start coming out.
So K1 and 2 don't get letters about, anything about family life?
Correct. Correct. In terms of our public communication, our public-facing communication, that's all on our website. I'm gonna show you guys that in just a minute. Our Family Life Education page has been up for several years. It has history as well as the regulatory requirements for family life, as well as another notification of the parent rights to opt out and the parent right to preview materials. After your suggestion last month, Ms. Carr, we did add the current VDOE guidelines, the current division letters for each level, and a copy of the opt-out form for this year. So I'm gonna show you the, the website. And Eric, I'm gonna ask you to drive for me. If you'll click on Programs and then Family Life Education. So this is the history part, this text here. And then down here at the bottom, it, there's linked PDFs for each of those different pieces. Would you click on the Virginia FLE Guidelines, please? So this is a document from the VDOE. It has grade levels, it has the standards by grade level. So if you'll scroll down, Eric, and, oop, stop, click on third grade, please. These are all hyperlinks, so it'll take you directly to the standards for that specific grade. What I really like about this, a lot of time in education, we have, you know, edug speak, right? And a lot of times, the standards are written that way. These have descriptive statements that are a lot more user-friendly for parents, for each of the standards, for each of the grade levels. Okay? Did you all have any questions about our notifications?
I just had one question. I understand that the state starts with grade three for family life. And we do not, and when Mrs. Carr asked the question if we did not do pre-K through 2?
So our third grade, third grade is where we start the, the sensitive topics.
Okay.
Kindergarten through second grade, the standards are really pretty general about community and things like that. And those are taught in the classrooms through social studies and, and things like that.
It does talk about good touches, bad touches.
Yeah.
In, in third grade, they really hit that.
No, they start in kindergarten with that.
Okay.
Because I went through all the objectives looking. And, and the one thing, when I went online to look at the links, and I do appreciate y'all doing this, I went under parents. You know, first, I thought, you know, this is a support for parents. So I went to parents and it wasn't there. So then I did go to programs and found it, but it made me think, would parents look for it under parents? I don't know, it's just something to think about because that's what I did.
Sure.
Do we, I, I've gotten all the materials over the years because I, my oldest is in sixth grade. But do we have any support for parents who maybe don't know how to talk, their parents never talk to them about anything, they're not comfortable talking to their kids? Do we have any support for parents? Because, you know, they might opt out, but they still may not know how to talk to their kids. I mean, I talked to mine, but if, if you're not comfortable, I know, I know a lot of adults who are not comfortable discussing sensitive matters with their children, but they might opt out of that as well. Do we have anything that would support a parent to maybe like, hey, if you do want to talk to them about it, here are some ways to do it? I mean, I'm just, because I know there are some parents who do not talk to their children at all. And that is a family preference, and if that's what you want to do, I respect that. But I'd love to, do we have anything to help any parents who might need help discussing sensitive topics with their kids?
I don't know the answer to that.
Sorry, I'm asking a hard question.
That's okay. I think that's a very touchy subject because if parents opt out, we allow that. And we don't try to push anything.
No, no, but to have information for them to view if they want to. I'm not saying we would send it home and be like, oh, but if, if, maybe they don't know how.
Well, we do share the PowerPoints and we also will share videos. We use some videos, we don't use a lot of videos, but we do use some. So if parents would like to preview those, use those, we totally will allow that. Typically, if a parent does want to opt out, we don't ask a lot of questions. We just allow them to opt out and, you know, move forward. But if they were to ask, absolutely, I mean, we can provide that information. But we're careful on that because.
I only know that more from a parent perspective where parents are like, I don't want to talk about it, but I don't want them learning it in school either. Yes, I mean, I just, I was wondering if there were materials for you to say, well, if you wanted to see more.
They can definitely use our materials.
Please check this stuff out and, and talk, you know, if you, yeah.
And they would get a copy of the instructional PowerPoint. So if it's a parent who wants to talk about their, talk about these kinds of things with their, with their child but doesn't necessarily want it to happen at school, they could certainly use that instructional PowerPoint to help guide that conversation.
Okay, one of the, the letters that's on the website, it talks about if a parent wants to opt their child out, then they fill out the form and they have to have a conference with the principal. And I understand the reason for the conference is that they confirm that they've received the, the opt-out form. And then the parent is informed as to what their child's gonna be doing while the other children are getting instruction. And I feel like that might be a step that we could think about eliminating because with working parents and busy principals, if I send in the opt-out form, I could get a simple email saying, we received your form, and a general sentence of what my child's gonna be doing. It seems like it could eliminate that step of having a parent come in for a conference or even a phone conference. Because it's not always easy getting, I mean, from what I'm hearing from parents, getting a principal who's very busy to call them back. So it just seems to me that that is a step that we could eliminate and make it easier for parents who want to opt out their child. Like you're saying, we don't ask a lot of questions. So why couldn't that step be eliminated and just send an email saying, we got your, we got your form?
Yeah, and I mean, it can be like just a simple phone conversation. I did that many times. But we can certainly kind of talk about it and make sure we're not missing anything in order to, if we did do it that way, we can definitely look into that.
Okay. Thank you. And thank you for, for doing what you did. Okay, the Carl Perkins Plan for Career and Technology Education. Mr. Mordecai. Did you play basketball?
I did play basketball.
You did? Did you win state championship?
I, I was, I did not win a state championship. So I was very impressed with that achievement.
You were envious tonight, weren't you?
Most definitely. I know how difficult that is.
Okay, I just wanted to get it out there.
And what an accomplishment, so. Very proud of them.
Yes.
Madam Chair, Honorable Board Members, Mr. Lombardo, thank you for allowing me to speak to you tonight. The 2020, 2021, 2022 Carl D. Perkins Grant has been submitted to you for First Read. This grant allocates federal funds to school divisions on an annual basis for the improvement of secondary and post-secondary career and technical education programs. I wanted to see, I know you had a chance to look at it, if you had any questions for me tonight. me tonight in regards to this grant and how it is utilized on an annual basis.
Just kind of wanted to ask the same thing that I asked Ms. Magner, anything that's different this year? I mean, you know, that's a long, kind of a drawn-out grant, and.
It is a very.
So just, if you could outline what the main difference is this year, if any, from last year?
It's not a great deal of differences. We have a process in place, the vast majority of the money, just to kind of give you an idea, it's based on students in the division, so we receive the federal funding based on that. Last year, we received $74,000, this year, we received $78,000 for the grant. So it is, you know, it's not an overwhelming amount, but it's a very nice chunk of money to help us in regards to funding our CTE program. So I work with Mr. Cooprider each year, and we've set aside that each year, we update the CTE lab. We've picked two the last two years. That takes a vast majority of the funding. So I, we've, I've allocated 64 out of that $78,000 for this year to be in equipment and technology. 52 of that $64,000 went to updating those two CTE technology labs. And Mr. Cooprider and his technology team keeps a cycle, so that we're consistently updating these labs, and no labs are falling extremely behind in regards to that technology, so we feel like that's very important, and that's something we can count on in regards to funds and utilizing it every year for that manner. And then with the remaining equipment funds, you know, each year, we look at the needs of the different CTE programs. Last year, I worked with culinary and cosmetology. This year, I'll work with different programs to get them some additional things based on their need.
Okay.
So, and then $10,000 goes towards certifications. So last year, you know, we went out, so I ended up being able to transfer that money to equipment and spend a little bit more there. But this year, you know, we are planning on offering, you know, certifications coming up, excited about that, so those funds should be able to go towards those.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Mordecai.
All right, thank you so much.
Okay, gifted update.
Playing musical podiums. I just have a quick update. When I was before you recently and gave you some, the progress on the update of the gifted plan, at that time, we were going to be bringing you back a plan this spring, so that you could review it and vote on it. And now that we've gotten into really some of the meat of the work with our gifted research team, I think that was a little ambitious. This plan, our plan has not truly been updated, and I would say almost 20 years. We've just been making minor tweaks to it, and the group we have working on it now, they are really delving into the possibilities of expanding the opportunities for students, looking into some other areas of gifted, such as fine arts, such as career and technical, specific academic knowledge, and we don't want to do a disservice and bring something to the board that perhaps did not have, was not gone through thoroughly, and have all the information in it that is adequate. So we've modified the plan a little bit, the timeline. What we'll be doing is we will be bringing you a first read of it in the fall. We are actually looking at, excuse me, one minute, October for first read with a vote in November, and what that does for us is then that gives us all of next year to budget for any items that we will need the following year of implementation. It also allows us time to start preparing and advertising if we have new programs, if we've got to identify students to participate in those new programs. It just gives us that upfront prep time, and we think that it will make it more successful with whatever we are proposing in this new plan. So we just wanted to, to let you know. We're not, we're not behind, we just, I think, we're a little too ambitious when we first brought that timeline to you.
Sounds like a wise decision to me.
Thank you.
Okay, and next is the 2021, 2022 calendar.
Yes, ma'am. Board members, we presented the first draft of the calendar to you at the February meeting. We've brought it back for a second read and for approval, and so you have that before you as an action item tonight.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve the proposed 2021, 2022 school calendar.
Okay, motion's been made, it has been second. Vote, please.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Briggs. You up here for the next one, too?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. The Virginia School Boards Association Business Honor Roll.
Yes, ma'am. Board members, the Virginia School Boards Association gives, school boards an opportunity to nominate and recognize businesses that have been strong supporters of our schools, and part of the process is we have to have a resolution approved by the board in order to submit that nomination. So we're bringing forward to you a resolution to approve, the business that we are recommending for, to the VSBA for recognition is Ferguson Enterprises. As you recall, they have generously donated $25,000 to our Building Trades Program this year. So with your approval tonight of the resolution, we'll be able to go ahead and complete that nomination process for the recognition by the Virginia School Boards Association for Ferguson.
Okay. Action item, we need a motion.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve the resolution to recognize Ferguson Enterprises on the VSBA Business Honor Roll.
Second. We have the motion, and it has been second. Vote, please.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Briggs. The Return to Learn Update, Mr. Mike Lombardo.
All right, Madam Chair, members of the board, as you know, we returned elementary students on the in-person continuum to a five-day-per-week schedule on February 16th. We're currently serving 1,534 elementary students each day with in-person instruction, and we're continuing to serve and provide our 100% virtual students, totaling 747 at the elementary level, those who chose that option. And please note, we'll continue to provide the 100% virtual option for families who chose that model for the remainder of the school year, and none of that will change. So at this time, we're currently collecting and analyzing data regarding the return to five days per week for our elementary students. We need to have enough good data and information to make a solid decision, especially as we're looking at the possibility of changing the current hybrid model for middle and high school students. There truly have not been enough school divisions returning to five days a week to provide a tremendous amount of data at this time. To that point, we want to see more data regarding our return to five days per week at the elementary level and our ability to effectively implement our mitigation strategies within that five-day-per-week model. That's exactly what the, what the updated guidance from the Virginia Department of Health and the Virginia Department of Education recommend that divisions do, and we are continuing to follow that, as we have since the very beginning of this endeavor. We'll be looking at the possibility, you know, of the middle and high school model, but we truly would not be looking to make any changes to the middle and high school model until at least mid-April. It's important to note that middle and high school writing SOL testing will complete March 26th. We certainly wouldn't want to disrupt those students and the processes that have already been set in motion for that testing process. It's also important to note, obviously, that we have spring break right there on the horizon then as well. Hopefully, that helps kind of to see that, that timeline. So as we contemplate any potential increase to the number of days for middle and high school, certainly, all factors will be considered, and we know there are many, as there have been throughout, as we've gone through the process at each level. And as a reminder, as we monitor the community COVID data, community spread does not equate to school spread. State and national agencies have explained that schools should not wait to reopen based on community numbers, although those community numbers are an important part of the puzzle. The governor announced a push for schools to reopen in some form of in-person by March 15th. Of course, many divisions did not do like we did, and they were not quite as far, right, in the in-person model. So that push is there. We've done a good job and, and worked hard to be in the position we're in right now. Divisions that have been open are showing little to no spread of the virus in school environments. In Olive White County schools, we have had no spread in our buildings due to the effective implementation of our mitigation strategies. So again, now that we have elementary students in person, five days a week, we will continue to collect data, monitor, and analyze that data to help to inform those subsequent decisions. So that's where we are right now. Hopefully, that gives you a little timeline and some of the work that we'll be doing behind the scenes as we move forward, and of course, providing the board with more information.
Okay. So what I understand you to say is it's the possibility of mid-April?
That's correct.
Because I've had bus drivers contact me asking questions, as well as parents, I want to make sure that I'm giving the right.
Yeah, and I, and I want to be clear, until at least that mid-April, and that's why I gave you sort of some information.
Right.
About some things that are in process and the fact that we're looking at data right now.
I do have a question.
Yes.
I know that people can opt out of SOLs, especially if they're virtual learners. What is the process for that? Can we just, not like in detail, but like, what is the basic, is there a website they go to to do it? Do they have to fill out a form from the school specifically? I'm just, I've been asked a lot about that, just because it's been a crazy year, and a lot of people don't feel that their child should have to take these tests.
So parents have always had the ability to refuse that their child participate in SOL assessments. That hasn't changed this year, they still have that option. What VDOE has asked us to do is to kind of have two pools of parent refusals. So if a parent is refusing due to the pandemic, then we're going to code that a little differently than a parent refusal for, I don't feel like my kid is developmentally ready for these tests, I don't agree with them taking it. So that's a general parent refusal. So the process either way is that it does need to be in writing, that can, can be an email, it would go to the principal. The principal or the school testing coordinator would then forward it to me, so I keep them on file. So that's really it. A couple things to keep in mind, a general parent refusal does result in a score of zero for the student. A COVID refusal results in a no score, so they'll still get a score report, it just, it'll just say no score.
So it's better to have a no score than a zero, I guess? Or are they comparable?
It depends. There are some considerations in terms of federal accountability. Our COVID refusal, our kids who refuse due to COVID, as of right now, and y'all know everything is, is very fluid, but as of right now, they would not count as participants for federal accountability, and as of now, that has not been waived. So we, the school division would take a hit on accountability for the COVID refusals, but not necessarily for the, but not for the parent refusals.
Okay.
So, there's a lot of.
And how would that affect the, I know they were looking at growth over proficiency, how would that affect the students' growth over the years? Would it affect them in any negative way? I'm just trying to put information out, because I've been asked a lot of these questions, and I'm not 100% sure of the answer.
Sure, and I, I don't think VDOE is yet either, I'll be really honest. So if, if, if a student doesn't take the SOL assessment this year, they would not have a baseline from which growth could be calculated next year. So for example, for a third grader in reading, if it's a parent refusal this year, next year, they would take the test, they'd get what they'd get, there would be no opportunity for that score, if it's a failing score, to count towards growth. That fourth grade score would then be their baseline for fifth grade.
And see, parents don't understand all that, when we're doing data at the schools, and, but parents don't understand that.
Right.
And there are more consequences for not taking the state exam in high school as opposed to elementary school, is that correct?
Absolutely, yeah. At, at the high school level, students have to get verified credits. Our ninth graders, as our current junior class, they have to have five verified credits. Our current seniors have to have more than that, depending on their diploma. So when we get a refusal in at the high school, the site testing coordinator and the counselors talk with the, the parent, okay, what's the plan to get this verified credit? How are we going to make sure that Colleen can, can graduate?
So that's something that can actually be detrimental to the student to not take it, but for the child, it's not as big of a, a deal in, like, let's say, sixth or seventh through third, because that's when they really start.
Right, third through eighth grade, you know, there's not, there's not that verified credit requirement, so there are fewer consequences for the child.
Yeah, and that's what most parents are, they're not worried about our data.
No, and rightly so.
Exactly.
They're worried about their kids.
So one thing I would add to that, Ms. Yolik, to your point, would be that for virtual students, for instance, if the family does choose to opt out, that's certainly something they may choose to do. In, in that scenario, we would be reaching out to that family, and then we would be not offering, but setting them up with the remote assessment, it's not the actual SOL. But what it is, is an assessment that can be very helpful, because it's aligned to the SOL. What it can do is it can give the teachers then valuable data about the child, and it can also help us look at at least internally growth, it's not the SOL. Now, the family could also opt out of that, but that can be done right from the home, it's not the actual SOL, but probably more importantly, it should be about mastery of curriculum and learning, not scores. So what that would do is allow us to have some additional data that can help us with that child as we continue to work with them. So that's something that our school teams will be sharing with families.
Okay.
Thank you. And that's brand new, that just came out two weeks ago, so I haven't even been trained on it yet, that's next week and the week after, so once that, once that training happens, we'll be sharing it with our schools, who can then share it with our 100% virtuals families who refuse to, to send their kids in for the test.
So does that assessment that you're talking about come from VDOE?
It does.
It do, okay.
Yes, and, and there's just preliminary information right now, but we do know that there's going to be something that, that will help us in the way that I described. So we're, we're waiting, I think, on some more details and all, but yes.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. The Revised Teacher Scale, and this is an action item. Is this Mr. Kepnis? You sleep back there?
Uh-huh. Again, in front of you is the teacher's scale, which will segue nicely into the budget. I'm going to cite to you some language that came out from the State Superintendent's 26-page memo regarding budget, which speaks to a 5%, and this is important that we understand the breadth and depth of this, a 5% average increase for certain positions for the biennium, two years, the biennium, but it's, it's this current year, the biennium is this current year and next year. And that's ultimately, when we get into the budget, these really go hand in hand, that's ultimately where the additional funds is coming from, from the General Assembly approving that. So with, honestly, with the help of Dr. Thornton, we went through the teacher's scale, we altered the scale, we increased the steps on the scale, so that our teachers would be able to achieve that average of 5% over the biennium. So ultimately, that's a new scale in front of you for your approval, which would begin So ultimately, that's a new scale in front of you for your approval, which would begin July 1st.
And we get the funds from the state?
Well, that's the interesting piece, exactly. Let me read the memo to you. It's important you understand this. It says, "General Assembly funded standard of quality instructional positions include the teacher, school counselor, librarian, instructional aide, principal and assistant principal positions," and this next piece, "school divisions that provide less than 5% during the 2020 to 2022 biennium will receive a prorated state payment." I don't want a prorated state payment, but that's me.
You're a force.
I think, I want all the aid payment. So the guide in front of you is, will be an average of 5%.
5%.
So our goal, my goal, would be to get all of that state aid, and ultimately, yes, we're paying our teachers accordingly.
All right, so the increased revenue is designed to do just what we've done here, and so as Mr. Kepnis is saying, that scale now represents what needs to happen so that we have the 5% over the biennium and that we receive the revenue that absolutely will take care of that.
But how many years?
The average of 5%, the only thing we have in front of us is over this biennium.
But we're going to have to maintain this?
Well, that's, we would have to look at that guide if we were to go backwards. So yes, that's your new guide.
You think they're going to continue to pay up? That's a $52,000 question?
Well, let's think that through. If we have that new guide starting July, let's say, worst-case scenario, we leave it flat for the subsequent year. Next year's the 21, 22. If it were left flat for the 22, 23, that would be no increase. I don't know that the state, I honestly don't know if the state will have an opinion of years after this regarding increases. I know they're really trying to equalize what the teachers are making or these standard of quality positions are getting, I don't know, based on industry standards, I think, in other states across the country. But this would be a new guide. I don't, I don't know that you should approve it thinking that we'll retract back after next year. This would be your new teacher's.
Yeah, we want to make sure that this is maintained.
That's right.
That would be our goal.
Yes.
Right, this would be our scale, this would be your scale moving forward, and of course, each year, you would have to make decisions regarding compensation.
I don't know if I've answered your question.
No, you did. I'm just, it's a lot going through my head, but I mean, this is, this is great by teachers.
It really is. It's, again, it's not just the teachers, because the changes in the budget that we're going to talk about will impact all of these SOQ standard of quality positions referenced with these, the IAs, your principals, assistant principals, your counselors and librarians as well.
Okay. Ready for motion? Madam Chair, we'd like to make a motion to approve the new teacher's scale to meet the General Assembly budget with a 5% pay increase over the biennium for teachers' pay.
Second. Okay, you have a motion, and it has been second. Vote please. Next is the budget approval.
Very good. So with this, I just have a very few slides just to capitalize the changes that we've made since, I'll call it since draft one, which was the last book that I provided to you. This is, I'm calling draft two, and there's areas that have changed. So first and foremost, the General Assembly approved, so we got numbers in December that the governor issued, estimated numbers. The Senate approves similar formatted numbers, the House, and then finally, the General Assembly as an entity approves these final numbers for us to pencil into our budget. So again, it says the state chair of 5% set for standard of quality positions. It's only an average of 5%. So I'm not going to stand here and tell you everyone gets 5%. It's an average of 5% over the biennium, which is this year and next year. And you'll see the top, this is just the state. The county will not change. Ms. Yulik, I think you had said it earlier, we're not asking for a dime more from the county. That's still accurate. So this is just the state, we call it the general fund, which is your operating fund. You'll see went from the 34.8 to 35.7. So ultimately, that's the increase that the state is telling us they will be sending us, the increase not over the current year, but over draft one that you saw. So from the numbers I thought we were going to have today, we're going to receive $915,000 more than I spoke about in February. So that's outstanding. And this is ultimately what you would approve. This is all funds. When I say all funds, it's your general operating fund, utilities, salaries, it's your textbook fund, some of which comes from the county, it's your cafeteria fund, and it's your grants. So all of it, so you'll see the 70 million. The reason that's maybe higher than you're used to is because that includes the cafeteria and the grants. The next slide, you'll see that's your operating fund. I think that's a number you're more familiar with, the 63 million. So you'll see from the Olive White County, the 26, 982, 059, that's the same number they're contributing this year.
Okay.
And those two slides, all funds, and then the general fund is what you would take action on. And then following your approval, I would draft a letter to the Board of Supervisors for them to memorialize those same spending categories with those same amounts. And lastly, I think it's important you do know that within this budget, it's, I believe, the last page in your booklet, capital maintenance, we're asking of the county $250,000 towards capital maintenance, again.
And Steve, I think it's also worth mentioning with the, some of the additional federal funds that we're receiving, for instance, due to the pandemic, we are not, we cannot reduce local funds and supplant them with federal funds, and I think this board knows that very well, but I do think it's important for the public to hear that as well.
Exactly. I mean, you can't reduce, if we're, one of them is $2.1 million. We're applying for that now in terms of how to spend it. The application is due April, by April 1st, but we can't then go and reduce your general budget by $2.1 million, so.
I do have a couple of questions.
Please.
So, to my knowledge, the STEM teacher at Hardy has been an issue for a long time. My understanding was that there really was no space for this class in the building. Carrollton got it because of class sizes, and I did advocate for those positions, for the class sizes, because they were a class and a half in one resource. So I, my understanding is that STEM position goes into place when we open that new building, and the STEM teacher will have a STEM room at Hardy, the new Hardy, is that correct?
Correct.
I'm just clarifying for, you know.
That was discussed.
That was discussed, and that's...
I know, just...
And I'm glad you did that.
And so the next thing, because we all advocate for equity in education for all children in the county, and to assume that's different would be, means you're not really watching what we're doing and what we're saying. The reading and math specialist, this is going to be the last time I bring it up because I know, have we added additional reading or math specialists? I know Carrollton is getting an additional reading specialist. I've been told that after the last meeting. But are we looking at this budget and at least looking to hire more than that one going to Carrollton?
So Carrollton is getting an additional reading interventionist, sort of the same thing, but they don't have to have the, you know, specialized endorsement. So it's a reading interventionist that is being advertised, and we are also advertising for math and reading interventionists, additional ones.
Okay, so that's like, so if you train the aides, they would be here, the interventionist is here, and the specialist is here?
That would be correct.
Like, not, you know, but...
But that's probably correct, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, so we'd have the aides in the classroom working with kids, and then the interventionist might take kids who are just a little bit further, and then the specialist would work with the ones who need the most help? Is that kind of how we would...
Well, not exactly. Our reading specialist or our reading coaches actually work with teachers to coach them on best practices. So they do less with students and work more with teachers. Our interventionists work only with students.
Okay. All right, so we are looking for those positions?
We are.
Throughout, and then we're still going to do the 10 aides and train them appropriately, and then have them help in the classrooms as well?
We are looking to do something, yes.
Because we have discipline and educational needs that need to be addressed coming this fall. Okay, that's my question, had asked.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have one more question for Mike, and I just, it's more of a clarification, more for the viewer purposes, you know, all our viewers out there. When it comes to the construction manager position that we're getting, my understanding of this position is that it is a temporary position to help Chris Coleman, who pretty much is a man of all talents, monitor that, those specific constructions, and possibly with the new West Side, so it may be a little bit longer, depending, so we have more skin in the game, so we have someone boots on the ground there all the time watching what's going on to make sure the schools are done correctly and efficiently. It's, this person wouldn't be doing the same thing as anyone else. There is no overlap with this position, is that correct?
None whatsoever. I can't describe it any better than you just did. I can just confirm that you're exactly right. Chris's job is very clear, division-wide, everything that we do with operations, facilities, Mr. Coleman oversees all of that work. It's extensive work. This is specific to the construction, boots on the ground every day, making sure that the board and the community's best interest is taken care of with the construction. It is temporary, and I think Dr. Thornton made that very clear in a previous meeting, but you are correct.
And feel free to always say I am exactly right. I enjoyed that. Feel free to say that anytime you'd like, anytime.
You sing to your ears, right?
I know, it was beautiful, I had a moment.
Mr. Coleman, did you want to speak on that?
Um, Mr. Coleman, I would like to wrap it up. It's a Georgia D Tyler, and I think we want, or we have learned lessons from the construction of Georgia D Tyler, and that was one of the reasons this was even suggested and discussed, correct?
That is correct. Of course, I wasn't here during that at that time period, but those are some of the things that Dr. Thornton actually wanted to pinpoint that didn't happen again. So by putting these positions in place and putting these actual steps in place, we can avoid things of roof issues, HVAC issues, just after-the-fact issues, because we will have that individual on ground. Absolutely.
I'd rather do it right the first time than have to fix it later. That's my general philosophy in life, so let's do it with these schools. Do it right the first time.
In terms of penny-wise, pound-fullish, for a $27 million project, I think a $75,000 salaried position is well worth, well worth it.
I agree. I was just clarifying, because I think there was some misrepresentation earlier in anything.
Madam Chair, are you ready for motion?
Yep, I think, if there are any more questions, we're ready for a motion.
Great.
Okay. Madam Chair, I would like to make a motion to approve the 2021-22 school operational budget as presented. I'm going to put my glasses on.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion. It has been second. Vote please. Now we're ready for the action on closed session items. Personnel report, this is an action item.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the personnel report as attached and presented.
And the addendum.
And the addendum.
Second.
Okay, motion has been made and second. Vote please. Next is adoption of a consent agenda, including the meeting minutes, the financials, donations, and overnight field trips. This is an action item.
Madam Chair, I would like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as attached and presented.
Okay, the motion's been made. Mr. Wilson, second. Vote please.
I wasn't at the, I wasn't at one of the meetings.
At which meeting?
The public hearing.
Okay. Motion carried. Any policy updates and revisions? We had four policies with the first read. Any questions, any discussion?
Not at this time.
Nope. If none, that's the first read. Just information. Next is policy regulations and exhibits. Three, any questions? All right, we're ready for board comments.
I have a comment, Madam Chair. I hadn't planned to comment, so, but I wanted to make this comment. When I sit here as a board member and represent my district, which is the Smithfield District of Olive White County, I represent every child, every staff member in the Olive White County school system. There are no divisions when I represent them. I represent them as a whole, and I want to make that known to the public. I do not divide. I represent all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Taz. Anybody else? Okay. It is 8:22. It didn't go as long as I think we thought that it would. This meeting is adjourned.